Dr. Bruce Sess. Item number five on the docket requests to abandon section of McMullen Avenue from Stanley Street as part of 70 feet to the town of North Smithfield municipal line. A, we'll open the public hearing and argue this before the public hearing and B, discussion by council or other action. Council would like to open the public hearing. On this matter, does anybody would like to speak for or against this proposal?
Mr. President, if I may, we're into the meeting for the abandonment of the road. I see Mr. Godwin saying, "Mr. Godwin, do you..." May Mr. President ask Mr. Godwin to address this and tell us what his... I don't see Mr. Erickson. Is Mr. Erickson here, the town planner?
No.
Maybe if Mr. Godwin would like to bring the council up to speed.
Are there any questions that would be asked? I guess so.
Dr. Phil, I have one question. I remember seeing there was supposed to be also an abandonment on the Wensocket side as well, and I had information on this currently voted on by the city council last week.
Can you wait a second? Just wait a second while the car gets quiet.
You said it was voted on... Mike, can you come to the microphone, please?
Does that microphone work? I think it works. That's how it works.
There's no wire to it.
No wire to it? I'll be honest.
I'm sorry, you said it was voted on by the city Wensocket?
City council voted on it last week and passed it.
Do we have written the...
Is it...
I'm a little taken back that the town planner is not here to walk through the process and to tell us. Mr. Godwin, so, sorry, let's get around some budget. I would like to say in writing that the city council had approved it. I'm also concerned, is there a time clock on this application? Or you're being asked, you're asking this council to abandon a road, which I don't know if there's a time clock on this, a certain amount of time which this council has to act upon?
I'm not sure.
No.
No.
This is not a...
Not a zone change or something like that? Yeah, I do get it, but I don't want to get caught up in the technicality because we don't have the information in front of us. We didn't have it at the last meeting either, so we're being asked to look at it and I'm not comfortable with it. I don't know what else to say.
Can we just continue the public hearing?
Yeah, we can ask questions tonight though, so maybe to expedite the next hearing, right? All right. Anybody have questions?
I'm just going through the planning board minutes we have. February meeting, I know they met in March, so I'm not necessarily trying to set the speed on that deal. There were some questions regarding wetland delineations. I guess the planning board has seen the wetland delineations as of the February 4th meeting?
They received a full package for their last meeting. Yeah, they voted to recommend it in favor.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Godwin?
I have, going through this one. The packet that was supplied to the planning board in the March, the March meeting, did it have the site plan, the wetland, well, you said the wetlands, and the part of the building from the application that was submitted?
Yes.
It did have all that. I'd like to, I'd like to get, my concern is that we have minutes, and I know a meeting did take place March 3rd, but the only thing we have from the March 3rd meeting was that they did vote to grant approval, but we don't have in writing the, like you said, Wensocket side of it, nor do we have any of the info from the North Smithfield side of it, other than the recommendation from the planning board. So I'd be mindful to wait until we can get Mr. Erickson to come to the meeting.
I would agree.
Or at least provide the information.
Well, no, I'd like to have Mr. Erickson here so he can answer it in person, and/or the chairman of the planning board, one or the other. Probably both would be nice, if the planning board chairman has the time, but remember, he is a volunteer, so. Mr. Godwin, so the request is to abandon a paper road. Where would the home be built? Would it be built on the North Smithfield side or the Wensocket side? Judging by the minutes, Mr. Erickson saying that we would get tax revenue, I'm going to assume that the home would be built on the North Smithfield side.
About 90 to 92 percent of the houses in North Smithfield, unfortunately, because of the geometry, is a very small slice of the house that would have to be on the Wensocket side of the line.
Is there actually a passable street there now?
The left front side of the road.
But on the back side, is McMullen passable?
No.
No. So the road...
This only began, was precipitated by actually a request by the public works director under the side, in our method, and he suggested petitioning the city council to abandon that stretch of the road because it was never going to be built, and they would just soon see it off the books. The problem is that a very small portion of it is in North Smithfield, about 75 percent of that road is in the Wensocket. So what we're looking at is only about 20 to 25 percent of that road.
May I ask a good question, Mr. President? Mr. Godwin, so the public works director of Wensocket reached out to you asking you to do something, so is that what I heard?
I had a meeting with him out on the site.
Yeah.
Because we were going over some zoning setback issues, and as you know, Steve D'Agostino lives in town.
Yeah.
He recommended that the road is of no use as a paper street. It'll never be built by the city Wensocket. It only is abutted by two separate lots, the one I own and the next door neighbors.
Counselor Soli.
One of my concerns about us having the physical documentation in front of us is, if you can follow along, we do have the issue of Old Tiff Road that we've been discussing recently. Without documentation, I don't want to abandon the street then, but 200 years from now, we have a council sitting up here saying, "Whose road is it?" And they'll be in the same vote as this council as regard to Old Tiff Road, that, you know, or even Old Ox Road for that matter. I think we just need the documentation in front of us.
Mr. Godwin, if you can have the, I guess, the minutes or a lot of the things in Wensocket that they did abandon the road, again, the next meeting, also, Mr. will have, we'll see if we can get Mr. Erickson to be here, give us some more data, more information. What we can do is we can continue this to our next, next town council meeting.
I'll get a copy of the city resolution.
That would be fine.
If I'm frank consideration, yes. If I may, Mr. President, there may be people in the audience who wish to continue this, but I don't know if anybody else in the public wants to, we'll ask them if they...
Absolutely. Anybody like to speak on this issue?
Seeing that we have a motion to continue it to the next meeting?
Going twice?
To a date cert. Oh, yeah, we have to ask it three times, right? No, just to a date cert. Yeah, but as far as the public meeting for this evening, do we have to ask three times if there's anyone? So we're going to continue the meeting to a date cert, so Mr. Godwin can get the Wensocket resolution or whatever it was they passed in Wensocket, and hopefully through the acting administrator, you can ask Mr. Erickson to be here, Mr. Pommely?
Yes.
Okay, to answer questions for the town council, and a date cert would be, Phil, do you think you'll have this up by next town council meeting?
I have a copy in my office, I can get it to you.
Oh, super, okay. So what's the next meeting? We're kind of jammed up here, but, all right. Oh, good, I'll make a motion for the sound for a continued date of law.
I'll second.
Anything else Mr. Godwin wants to say, so?
You can get a copy of what, the planning board review?
No, well, that...
I'd like that too.
Counselor Soli, you asked for DM, wetlands delineation?
Well, yeah, there was three things in their minutes that were approved tonight that they had asked for. I mean, I would think that they voted 5-0. I would think that they have, but I'd like to have the documentation as well for them to abandon the street.
Mr. Erickson has a copy of this, so...
Oh, good. Well, as long as somebody gets it to Madam Court so she can get into our packets, April 4th would be, but I must say that because you're here, I am going to charge you with doing that, because Mr. Erickson's not here to do it, you could, you know, let's just get it to happen. Is Tony, Counselor Soli, is that okay?
Yeah.
Is I got a motion to continue this April 4th?
I second you.
Motion by Counselor Zawinski, sent by Counselor Soli to continue this to April 4th. Is there any further discussion? Here we now, Madam Court, go ahead, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Ms. Zawinski?
Item number six on the docket, discussion by council of order of action on consent agenda. All items in this section are considered in one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council has a request, and which each act direct the item will be removed from the consent agenda. A, payment of bills, B, town council minutes of January 4th, 19th, 2016, communication with the town board and commissions, conservation board minutes, January 12th, 2016, planning board minutes, January 21st and February 4th, 2016, item decommunications, North Smithfield municipal court reports for February 2016, North Smithfield Police Department monthly reports for February 2016, North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Services Incorporated monthly court for February 2016, yield control monthly reports for January and February 2016, resolution regarding support for the formation of coalition among rural and regional school districts, town enforcement. She would like to take items B, C, D, all in one motion, and we'll read the payment bills secondly.
I'm okay with that in a second, unless the council has want to hold back, as I did when the payment of bills off as well.
Okay, motion by the chair, second by, second by other members of the board. So in one motion, we're going to vote on B, C, and D, in one motion, two motions that we accept, perform communications with various board and commissions, communications.
Second.
Motion by the chair, second by Counselor Zawinski. Is there any further discussion? Here we now, Madam Court, go ahead, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion by council of order of action on specific items removed from the consent agenda above, payment of bills.
So can we call you administrator or finance, whatever, right? Whatever you want, okay?
Jason's fine.
Hi, Jason. Hey, Jason, page one of 16.
Sure.
Amazon, Adobe Acrobat, how many licenses did we get, downloads, did we get to that 400 and...
That's actually just for the two IT, we'll call them administrators, myself and my assistant.
Okay. Thank you. On page two, two of 16?
Yes.
Under automatic alarm systems?
Yes.
It's probably been before me, for some reason, I looked at it over the weekend. $390 for fire alarm in town hall, well, that seems like a lot of monitoring, a lot of money for monitoring.
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure why the charge is so high, but I know we do run annual inspections in every building.
Yeah.
So I have to actually figure out what the charge is for what they do for us to give you that answer, reply with the, you know, just an email that states what they do for that charge. Is that good enough?
Yes, because if we look down, the fire alarm highway is $105, I know they have different buildings, so I get that animal shelter is a separate fire alarm.
Correct.
So I have no problem approving that, as long as you get it back to us telling us what it was all about.
Sure, sure, sure.
Thanks. I mean, I, for one, don't have any...
No problem.
Page four, where, I don't know, seems like there's one on every page.
No problem.
Page three of 16. I'm going to assume that TNG is tangible overage for Brandon Eru?
Correct.
Okay, and Holliday on the comment, Brian Souza, what was Brian Souza's...
There was actually, this is a substance abuse dispersment for the substance abuse grant. Again, in the past, not all bills came to you, now all those came to you.
Yeah, there were comments, questions.
So it's something you might not have seen before, is Fund 17, is our substance abuse fund?
Okay, page four of 16, under Cody Landscaping Construction?
Yes.
We have a bill had $2,415 for clean walks and snowplow.
Yes.
What is that about?
This is contracted snow removal. So we have a line item in our DPW budget for contracted snow removal. When there are overages or work we can't get to, we call in, I believe, Mr. Penegas has a list of four or five contractors in the town that he would call on to cover overage work for us.
Okay, so more of a question from Mr. Penegas as to what was, where the snow...
Specifically where it was, yes, as far as that they are a vendor and we do pay them for overages part of the budget, no?
Okay.
But I guess it depends on what you really, where you're looking for.
Well, I wanted to know what was clean, what walkways, I mean, because we do have a DP, we have a, we have a public works department.
Yes.
And this is the first time I've seen where a vendor has come in and billed us for clean sidewalks and snowplow.
Yeah.
There may have been in the past, but I don't recall it.
I know they have in the past, but I'm not sure what the bill was called or description on it.
All right.
I know they definitely are one of our...
So with your commission as the acting town administrator, would you mind if I called the director of public works and ask him for an additional issue?
I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Thank you. Page five of 16, fidelity, security. All right, how do I get, what is that?
Actually, I believe this is for our new bank, for Webster Bank. We had to pay for a security platform for electronic transactions. We've changed over to positive pay and a few other controls over dispersing money with Webster Bank, and we had to pay for the sub software license, where they have their own, we'll call it protection firewall services, that they require us to have to operate their platform on our...
One-shot deal?
Yeah.
Done, thank you.
It should be townwide one time.
Okay, on page six of 16, overpayment, overpayment, I guess these were overpayments on tax bills?
Yeah, we do a third quarter true-up where we remit overpayments and send out delinquent notices.
Okay.
So you see a lot here because that happened in this quarter.
Okay, so on seven of 16, Marcelo Rabello, that's a tax overpayment.
Correct, yeah. I believe this one was specific to the escrow company made the payment, and they made the payment as well, so the payment was returned.
Okay, so is there a way they could all be lumped into one category or no from your reporting? Because there were them throughout.
It really depends on the report you guys get. The report that we've been providing is by vendor, so you're going to see each vendor's name, because that's what this is sorted by.
All right, thank you.
And off this, I could try working this out.
No, I'm not questioning, I just wanted to see, to make it easier for me to follow it, no, you...
No, you're right, there's a lot of the monitoring for repayments, yeah.
Okay, we have a payment of bills on page 14 of 16, January Architecture Studio Major. Unfortunately, Councilor Natos, I believe she's on the agenda to bring us up to speed on some of these, and I think we missed another update last month.
Okay.
But, okay, have you reviewed it? Is it okay? Have you seen it?
Well, this, all bills for the bonds go through PBIC for approval. This has been sent to them, and my assumption, although I can't tell you exactly, is that they got here, which means it was sent back to me by them with the okay to put it on the council for approval.
All right, I'm good with that. On page one of two, under sewer, I, I see that we have, like, if you look at the code numbers or the, whatever you call them, the account key numbers, they replicate themselves. One is for $36.17, but the other ones were $204.95. Just curious as to why...
There's, there's actually a split on certain invoices that go to the water sewer building. 85% is charged sewer, 15% is charged water. So if you notice to the left, you'll see that there's a six and a seven in that string. 15% on the top one is water-related, which is Fund Six, and the balance of 85% goes to the sewer. So it's just how we, we write one check that goes to four locations rather than writing four checks, four locations like we used to.
Okay, thank you, you answered my questions, thank you.
No problem.
Jason, just on the, first on the second page of the sewer.
Sure.
What is in current?
Yes.
$4,957. Is this a scatter review?
Yes.
Could you explain that to me, what that is?
The, this is basically professional services that were requested by the sewer department to do a review of their water and sewer systems. And actually, the result of their review, it's come back, you know, that there are quite a bit of things that we need to address as far as automating our system. So based on this review, I believe another item's going to come up from the sewer commission recommending that work be put into the systems that they have addressed with this review. I think that'll be in the future, though. This was just to document what they thought was wrong with the system.
So with just a perful...
What are we doing right, what are we doing wrong, and tell us what we can do to fix it.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. President, I actually had emailed my questions to Mr. Pommely. They're regarding the overpayments, the Beaver Solutions, which was for the Conservation Commission, which is on page three of 16, and Constant Contact, which is on page four of 16, which was the website platform for the newsletter. So I see my answer to the...
So, Mr. Pommely, you approve all the payment of these bills?
Yes.
Mr. Pommely, does the acting administrator and is the finance director do pay these bills?
I'll put on the other, yes.
Okay. Mr. President, through the recommendation of the acting administrator and the finance director, I make a motion to pass December payment of bills amount of $203,250.58.
Chair, seconds. Madam Court, go ahead, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Buche?
Item under eight oh, business, discussion by council of order of action on ordinances amendment, regarding section 2-222, town vehicles, second reading. What's the copy handed this matter? Do you have the...
It's absolutely written, raised in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may pontificate a little there, I think we've, we've all recognized that this town council spent a exorbitant amount of time on correcting this issue. We've heard input from people in this town that I greatly admire. Let's hope that we can put this to rest and move on with doing the town business, because as most people have stated, we have issues with Wensocket Sewer, we have economic development that is taking, and I want everybody to know that these things are taking place behind the scenes. It may not be being discussed up here actively, but they are being looked at and addressed through legal and other areas. But it's really time that we look at this, amend it, pass it, and let's move on. That's just what we said to you about it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any discussion? Okay, the ordinance itself has previously amended... Want to vote, Mr. Solicitor? Do I have to read this in its entirety?
I don't think you do. If you can present it as a second reading.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure.
Mr. President, I've been contemplating over this, and maybe my colleagues do as well, I don't know, but there are some things that I would like to see we discuss on the amended since our last meeting on Friday.
Good counsel.
Under A, business use, the third line down, it's actually the second sentence, transportation of personal property of passage is not associated with... I think we, we've discussed this up here about transportation of personal property. We're not talking golf bags going to a golf course, but if someone were to be getting, and I've heard from some of the department folks, that say they would not take their vehicle to pick up a loaf of bread and milk. But I have to say that town administrator is out and about on nights and evenings, and I really have no problem with town administrator stopping at a supermarket and picking up a loaf of bread and eggs and going home with it. And I don't want that to be contentious in the future for another town council. So how could the verbiage be changed? Most, this is basically to Solicitor Reguliozzi, how could we look at this to not five, 10, 20 years from now, somebody interpreted this insane personal property, he stopped for a half gallon of milk? It gets crazy, I mean, this is just way out of control.
Mr. President, just for the record, that language was in the existing ordinance.
I know.
I mean, you could strike it, I think based upon Mr. Penegas' testimony, we know why that was put in there at that time. I guess there was some allegation back in 2004 that somebody was dragging a boat. That's what they were, I think that's what this was aimed at. I think that's why that's in there, but...
My concern is that taking, taking someone's family on a shopping spree at taxpayer expense, and we went through this before, in 2009, it was 12 with Allegri's article. And the fact is, there's also liability associated with having other people over there.
I think we're talking about personal property only, is that...
Right, but it says, "Personal property or passage is not associated with departmental businesses prohibited." That's, that's the line.
If I may, Mr. President, if I may, there may...
Yeah, passengers is clear, certainly should not be added to passenger in vehicle. That's not on town business. But personal property is open to interpretation. I'm just concerned, yeah, we did hear testimony about towing a boat down the road, that's an extreme example of it, but if someone wanted to take this as like personal property, you know, you left your briefcase in the front seat, or, you know. Last meeting, I said hopefully common sense would prevail, but we all chuckled that that said common sense hasn't prevailed, so help me council members. If you're comfortable with it, I am, I'm just trying to make sure that it doesn't bite the next council, or some future council, over personal property.
But this is currently, this language is currently in the bill.
I know.
In the ordinance itself, currently.
I know, I know. We can, we can remove things that are in the current ordinance, we can add things. I mean, if everybody's okay with it, I'll be okay with it. I just wanted to bring it up. I'm not, I'm not going to go out and advocate, I'm just saying we should consider it, so if everyone's considering it, they're comfortable with it, I will be able to refer to the majority.
I think with the amount of time we've spent on this, and it's existing, I say it stays and being motionable. And we reviewed it, we've all had a chance to review it multiple times. It's consistent with the existing, the current existing ordinance regarding motor vehicle usage for town employees. Basically, all we did was we added in that the council oversees department heads and the administrator, and the administrator oversees the employees. I mean, that's the only real change that was placed in here. We removed some stuff, we added some stuff, but for the most part, this is the existing ordinance.
Agreed. So, may not be wrong, this is a rear and ugly head 20 years from now. So if we go to the second page, we're asking about submitting the law, and it says, "Submit submitted each week for pool by the town administrator, retained by the town finance director." And it's asking for it to be done every week. Could that be a little bit too cumbersome, having that submitted every week, paywalls every two weeks?
I think monthly is the best, but I'm not, you know...
I thought once a week was just a...
I mean, I'm not going to say that I would disagree with any request, but monthly just makes more sense for my purposes to process stuff.
Okay.
But again, you know, for my ease, doesn't mean everybody needs to go.
Okay, do you mind if I make that motion? Okay, do you mind if I make that motion, do we change it to once every month that the logs are submitted?
Trying to find the, okay, where's.
But it starts on the first page.
Okay, I'm sorry. So each, each month?
Well, yeah, what it currently reads is.
At the end of the month?
At the end of the month?
That, that's how it operates now, is at the end of the month, the reports get sent to us. So it would just be the logs in addition to the reports get sent to us?
I, I think that's fair from a workload for the, for the town employees.
For me, that's, that's more than enough for me.
So once a month? At the end of the month, correct? So you want to like logs submitted at the, at the end of the, at the last, the last day of the month, the last day of the month? Once a month at the end of the month.
Yeah.
Did that cover it, David? Legal?
Monthly?
I would just say monthly.
Okay, I'm okay with monthly, whatever, as long as it's consistent, whenever, whether it's the second week, third week, about.
For me, monthly means the full month.
Okay.
So even if I receive it on the first of the day after, it's got to cover that, no?
So at the end of the month, we do it, correct? So we have the, we have the new motion. I'll make a motion, we change that from each week to once a month at the end of the month.
The chair, seconds. First, my counsel, second by the chair.
Counselor Zawinski.
I'm sorry. Counselor Zawinski, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay, it's okay, it's done, we move on.
All right, so, is there any further discussion on the amendment?
On that one?
On that particular amendment. Hearing that matter, Clerk, go, go, please.
Ms. Als, yes, this is, Mr. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushen?
Yes. Is there any amendments to the, to the bills presented?
I, I have others, but I'd certainly let my colleagues, if they wanted to jump in on that, any amendments.
Counselor, no?
I just want to entertain the part of D marking of vehicles. If we're going to have a seal on it, I personally don't have a problem with it remaining with what's plate that it has now and not a government municipal plate. And if anyone else would be interested in removing that.
Well, currently, currently, in the ordinance itself, I discussed it to you before this, it says town plate.
I know that.
So it's not like it'd be, it's not like it was changed for all these years, and now all of a sudden, we're going to change it.
I'm just making a motion, see if anyone would be interested in removing that, the sentence, since we're already putting sixteen-inch seals on it.
Over the twelve right now.
Well, yeah, for any vehicle like as of tonight that doesn't have a seal on it, would have to have a sixteen.
Yeah, but there's, there's seals that are already purchased for the vehicle chain, no, sixty dollars. I'm rounding up. There's a, there's a motion by Council, Councilwoman Als.
Second of the discussion.
Okay, second one, Council, await the discussion, Karen.
Either way, my, my thinking on this again is the ordinance is pretty much consistent with what it was, taken a lot of time on this. Honestly, if there's stickers on the car, I don't care if the plate gets changed, if there's a plate on the car, I don't care if stickers go on it. One or the other, it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't need to be both, but I'll defer to the rest of the council and to the ordinance if need be, but my personal opinion is one or the other should be, should suffice.
Because my, my personal opinion is that the ordinance is that all our cars have public plate, uh, or town plate on it, and that's what the ordinance dictates. Basically, the four hundred thousand plate is a courtesy plate. I know firsthand, because when I was a state representative, I had House sixty-one, that was a courtesy plate. But my guy had also a, another number, another plane registration. So again, being, being as such, is why I believe that, that we have to adhere to ordinances, and otherwise than that, you end up with chaos. And the fact is that this is an ordinance that's been on the books, it's basically overlooked by everybody except this council. I believe it should, I should, it should be as such, and we should have the public plate on it. That's my personal opinion.
Are you looking to me for? Oh, yes. I, I, I think that the decaus will suffice, the four hundred thousand courtesy plate, I feel is something that should be retained on the vehicle, but that sticker that size, I, everyone's going to know that it is a municipal vehicle, so the courtesy plate, I, we're just beating this up for, I, I don't know, I'm okay with the big sticker on the car, I'm fine with that. So can we have a motion, second?
It was for discussion.
Now, so, yeah.
Sorry, excuse me.
Can we articulate the motion again, please?
Motion to leave the plate on the car.
Yeah, in.
The forty thousand?
In some section of D marking vehicles, after sixteen inches of diameter, it would re-ruled and registered with municipal government plates.
So strike register and register with municipal government plate, strike that?
Yes.
I should say register anyway.
It should still be registered.
It should be registered, but it can have the courtesy plate on.
Just don't leave town. After the word registry.
I would hope so.
So sixteen inch, no diameter, and registered, period. Strike with municipal government place. Is that correct, Council, no else?
Yes.
Second, motion, we have a second, that's all.
Okay.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Mr. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushen?
No.
Mr. President?
Okay.
I'm sorry, is there anybody else, other motions, to change? Starting on the first page, the vehicle travel and fuel log shall be submitted. Now, we've changed it to read at the end of each month for approval by the town administrator and retained by the town, town finance director, period. Just for me to clean up a little, I'd like to say all travel and fuel logs are subject to review by town council, it's a point to have, it's almost like a run-on, it isn't a run-on something, but if we put a period at the end, the town finance director, and then we included, all travel and fuel logs are subject to review by town council. I think we're just beating the verbiage up a little bit. That's a motion, Mr. President, unless there's a discussion, we can second the discussion.
I'll second the discussion. So basically, the last line, you'd like to have after, period after finance director?
Yes.
All travel and, all travel and fuel logs to be.
Our subject.
Shall be.
Shall be. Oh, shall be subject, okay.
Shall be subject.
I'm sorry, shall be subject to.
Town council.
To review by the town council, right, you want to just review them, not approve them, right?
Correct.
So, okay, so it's been the fuel, the way down the road, town council can review them. Motion, we have a second, please.
Yes, yes. This is motion by Councilman Zawinski for this amendment, second by the chair. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that matter, Clerk, go, go, please. On the amendment.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Mr. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushen?
Yes.
Mr. President, under F, and this will be the last suggestion that I make, it currently reads, any elected town official or other town official, appointed department director employee who fails to perform his duties under the offset provisions may be subject to disciplinary action, including suspension or termination of town vehicle privilege and/or suspension or termination of employment. Now, this is where it currently reads, the town administrator and director of public safety, when this office is held by the town administrator, who fails to comply with the offset provision, may be subject to suspension or termination of town vehicle privileges by a majority of the town council. I just want to make it, it seems, it definitely looks like it's town administrator, town administrator, we keep singling that out. If we change the verbiage to say, all elected town officials, other town officials, appointed directors or employees who fail to comply with the offset provision may be subject to suspension or termination of town vehicle privilege by a majority vote of the town council. David, does that make sense for you?
Just state that again.
Okay.
I think that's fine, if you want to substitute for that.
The town administrator and director of public, no. If we wrote, all elected town officials, other town officials, appointed directors or employees who fail to comply with the offset provision may be subject to suspension or termination of town vehicle privileges by a majority vote of the town council. Like, clean it up a little bit, and it's not pointing fingers, it's anybody.
That works.
Yeah, so that, that's a motion.
Second by the chair. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that matter, Clerk, go, go, please. On the amendment.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Zaleski?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any more additions or deletions to the ordinance?
Just, just, I just want to just clarify, just before you finish, Mr. President, that language you put in was in place of.
Yes, in place of, I'll read what it's in place of, for the record, I did, I'll do it again. It replaces this language, the town administrator or the director of public safety, in parentheses, when this office is held by the town administrator, in parentheses, who fails to comply with the offset provision may be subject to suspension or termination of town vehicle privileges by a majority vote of the town council. So now, what I, what we just voted on was to write in there, all elected town officials, other town officials, appointed directors or employees who fail to comply with the offset provisions may be subject to suspension or termination of town vehicle privilege by a majority vote of the town council.
Excuse me, Mr. Solicitor, can you also the language?
I think the language, if one of the clerks can't, like, I have it.
You will set that, Clerk?
Yes, I do.
So the passage has.